City Commission meeting of Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. First things up is the order of business. Mr. Kessel, are there any changes to the order of business?
President Decker, I do have a couple of changes or requests that I'd like to make. The first is item 4A, which is an abatement rejection letter. Mr. Hirschfeld has a previous engagement where he won't be able to attend tonight until around 5:15. So if we could just kind of skip over that item until after the airport budget timetable meeting, he would certainly appreciate that. And then he'll arrive and be able to present that item to you. The next item would then be 6B1, which is a report on West Ridge Drive. If we could postpone that one commission meeting to just allow a little more time, we think that that would be helpful for us as staff to provide that report to you. We want to make sure we're as thorough as possible. And then I'd like to request an addition under 4, Admin Finance, of surplus property. We have two garages that we'd like to surplus as part of the site removal and land sale that we'll talk about. And then just two additional reports on the Western Dakota Energy Association Conference. So that would become 4F4. And then also a question for the Commission on our sister city of Dickinson, Texas, and maybe a response because of the Hurricane Harvey impacts that they have felt in that community. If we could, if that would be 4F5.
Any objection to the changes or questions for Mr. Kessel on the changes?
If not, I would look for a motion to approve the order of business with changes.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion to approve with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Changes are in effect. Second up is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that Commissioners would like to discuss?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved. We have two timetable, one at 4:45 and one that'll be postponed until, or I guess at 5 o'clock. And then we'll have the postponement of the abatement letter after that one. So first thing up is the administrative finance is 2018 budget ordinance. Mr. Kessel. I guess Deputy Administrator Carlson's going to handle it.
Thank you, President, and Commissioners, thank you for this. This is, I'm presenting the 2018 General Fund Budget. And in your packet, you have some information, and then I have a PowerPoint. But the amount is, am I not hearing?
Oh, you're not.
Can I turn it over? Let's try this. Now can you hear me?
A little better.
I have such a low voice. Let's just hold it.
Perfect.
Okay. Sorry. I am presenting the 2018 first reading of the General Fund Budget as a balanced budget of $16,833,511. And with that, with my PowerPoint, we'll go through it, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Can you flip the page, Sam? Okay, next page. All right, the budgeted general fund revenue. Thank you. On this page, this is just the revenue, and this is showing from 2015 to 2018. And what I wanted to show you was that the revenue is up by 4.11% as of '17. And this also shows you the amounts that are in property tax, admin fees, transfers in, and other revenues. And this is just the general fund totals. So this is what has been budgeted. So you see that there is an uptick towards the revenues going up a little bit in the last few years on that. And the expenses, in the general fund, oh, I'm losing it. General fund expenses on that, these are the operational expenses. This is 2015 to '18. And in this one, this is just the general fund departments, and this is including your salary benefits. And so this is your operational expenses on this part of it. And you can see that we're running just about $71,000 more, so it's about a half percent increase on this. Overall expenses, this is overall, this is including general fund, your special revenues, and your enterprise funds. And so you can see throughout the years, I just wanted to do a trend to see where we were in such a high point in 2015 in our expenses, and where we've come down every year. It's a decrease of about $6.6 million for '17 to '18 budget. And your '15 to '16 are actuals in that category, those expenses. Those are actual numbers. And then your '17, '18 are budgeted numbers. '17 isn't over, so just use the budgeted numbers. But that is a $6.6 million decrease as we keep going down. So there's not as much as transfers in. In our budgeted highlights, 2018 general fund forecasted budget and revenue expenses are slightly higher, as I said, from 2017 by 4.11%. There is still no city property tax increase. We have not increased at all. The oil impact revenue subsidy to general fund has stayed the same as '17, which is $3.5 million. Our goal was to try to bring this down, and it wasn't something that we could do at this time. But we want to have more debt repayment in our next 2018 general fund to make sure that we have a goal set that we are going to make some more debt repayments on this. There is a 3% cost of living increase to the salary matrix. That is not in a wage-type thing. It is on the whole salary. So it's a salary matrix increase of 3%, which is being proposed. And then the employees will stay at their wage step where they're at as of 2017. And the reason we did this is because then it hits everybody. Last year in '17, we had an increase in our health insurance, and only certain people that were applicable hit their increase. Others that have been here for, you know, a long time, they step out, so they don't end up getting an increase. This advantage of the 3% cost of living goes to the salary matrix where this will affect everyone on that. Also in 2018 proposed budget, there was a 2% increase from 2017 for administrative fees from the enterprise funds. So those that were projected to have 12% in '17 went to 14%. And those that were at 10% had a 12%. So that is administrative fees that are subsidized back to general fund for that. Also on the budgeted highlights, I did a page just on, so that you could see what the difference in the staff that is coming through even with 4.11% increase. There was a, no, there was, in '18, there was four new full-time positions requested. And in, there's also three part-time seasonal positions requested in buildings, grounds, and in streets. And two of those are for the weed and pest control. We no longer will have that contract through the county, so we are adding two seasonal part-time people just in buildings and grounds to support that weed and pest control on that. Yes, Mr.?
And in the budget, we decreased two full-time fire and one full-time HR, correct? We deleted them.
We deleted.
They just weren't hired.
Yes. Yep. The full-time positions that were being requested after all the workshops, two street operators, one IT tech, and one forester. Also in this budget that's being proposed is the police department has applied for a COPS grant, and which would provide the city with a school resource officer investigator for five years. And if this grant is approved, the city would have no cost at the first year, but then we would be responsible for 25% second year, 75% third year, and then full 100% fourth and fifth year on that. But that's if the grant is approved. Then also, there is a requested in 2018 personnel that there's some promotions within the departments, and that is a total of 55,000 among all departments on that. So that's where our increase is coming from. The reason this is a first reading is because of the process that has to be done, be able to get this into the county on a timely, according to the century code. So our first reading is today, and then the public hearing will be September 18th. And then the final passage, second reading, would be October 2nd, and then has to be to the county by October 10th on that. If there's any questions, but I'd like to thank everybody, all the staff. This is my first full-time with doing the budget. It was, it went really well, and I want to give a special thanks to Robbie, our accountant in finance, he put up with me. But all of the staff that helped, department heads, executive team, and everything, they were just wonderful to do that. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the 2018 budget? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the first reading.
So move.
We'll be having the public hearing on the 15th.
Second?
18th.
Right. The ordinance is number 1640, as a reference for the motion.
1640. So we have a motion to approve the first reading and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Carlson or any other staff members? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And look forward to some questions from the public during the public hearing on the 18th. So, we got a couple minutes. Ms. Kreip, can we cover this in a couple of minutes? Okay. Well, next up is telephonic meeting ordinance. Mrs. Kreip.
Mr. President, this is the second reading of ordinance number 1639, which is a telephonic meeting ordinance as requested by the Commission. The only change from the last reading is the incorporation of those items that were in the memorandum, which are the prerequisites before a Commissioner can participate telephonically.
Only question, Mr. President?
Question?
A sufficient number? Do we want to clarify that a little bit, or?
So legally, because the quorum is three, the sufficient number would be that, but we can sure clean that up if you'd prefer.
Well, I would rather, a quorum of members, I would rather see it say than a sufficient number, because who determines what that is?
Sure.
That's the only thing I saw that.
Three or more.
So we'll just ask for a motion to change the word sufficient in the fourth line of the second paragraph from sufficient to a quorum. Of, we'll take sufficient number out, put quorum in.
Would you make that motion to amend?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion to amend the ordinance by Mr. Friedrich and a second by Mrs. Trustum. Any other questions or concerns? We'll vote on the amendment. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything else? Questions for Ms. Kreip?
Yeah, so that was your motion to amend?
Motion to amend, yes. We'll have another motion to approve. So, and we've already had a public hearing on the ordinance.
Correct.
So I would look for a motion to approve ordinance number 1639.
I'd make that motion to approve 1639, as amended.
Second?
And we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Final passage of ordinance number 1639 is approved. We have a 4:45, right on time, timetable agenda, and we have swearing-in of officers. Mr. Kessel and Police Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President and every information. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the two newest members of the community, Officer Sidney King and Officer Mike Knoll. Sidney graduated high school in the state of Colorado and later earned an associate degree in criminal justice. He started working with the Department of Communications Specialist in April of 2015. Her goal was recently achieved after his arrival as a constable. Officer Mike Knoll graduated from high school in North Dakota. His path has led him to experience of crime and robbery, cold deputy, and recently has been cast as an officer. Mike also served six years in the military, served on national guard specials, which included serving a year in Afghanistan. At this time, I'd like to invite the Commissioner, sorry, the Administrator, Mr. Kessel, to come up and explain.
Okay. Don't mind holding that. We're going to have to share this one. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name, will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Aye.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson.
To the best of my ability, and that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
To the best of my ability and I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
Implicit in my employment and in furtherance of the best public interest.
To the best of my employment and furtherance of the best public interest.
Thank you so much, and welcome to the course. Since you're done first, you can have the privilege of introducing yourself to the Commission and let them know a little bit more about you. And let me turn this off. There you go.
Like previously said, my name is Mike Knoll. I've been living in Dickinson for the last two years. Before I came with the police department, I worked with the Southwest Narcotics Task I grew to love the city in the last two years of me living here, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue working here.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Hello, I'm Sidney King. I have been here for about two years, came from Colorado previously, moved up here for dispatching job I had previously, enjoyed that a lot, decided to move into an officer's spot, get the complete other end of things, and I'm enjoying it so far.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have about 10 minutes to our next timetable agenda, so we'll move on to 4D, tobacco dealer application. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. We have an application for a tobacco dealer license. This application comes from Roy Rosales, and he's doing business as the Smokers Trap Smoke Shop. This business will be located at 24 West Vallard Suite C. His fee is paid, and the qualifications have been met to qualify for a license. And just for your information, this is the first step in the process, and he'll still have to go to the state of North Dakota and get proper license and permits from them as well. So if you're, you know, excited about going down and buying something, it'll be a couple weeks yet until he obtains those additional licenses. So it'd be our recommendation as staff that you pass the dealer application permit.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the application? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve the application or deny it.
So move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yes. Sorry.
And a second. Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The application is approved. Next up, we have Historic Preservation Commission member, and that will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President and Commissioners. Historic Preservation Commission nominee, and the Dickinson Preservation Commission has asked that page warily be considered for the membership on the Historic Preservation Commission and her interest resume and request to the certified local government coordinator. Got to hold really still. So we're asking for that approval.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Commission member nominee?
Move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. New member is approved. About nine more minutes. We'll move on to F, Reports. Mrs. Nomenek, Monthly Hiring Journal.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Top of the list, we have police officers. Right now, we have an offer that's been made. We're still in the background phase for that one, and two more openings. We just had the position advertised and closed last week, so we'll be setting up interview dates for that soon. We had an internal opening for a patrol sergeant. They're still in the interview process on that. Communication specialist, I believe right now we've got two openings. That position closes this week, I believe, this week or next week. So we'll be doing interviews soon for that. We had one firefighter position open, completed the interviews for that position, and offer was made and accepted. We still have the city attorney position open. We have that advertised until the 11th. So we will be looking at doing some interviews for that soon, hopefully. Senior engineering tech, that's been a real difficult position for us to fill. We kind of took a break on that for a while. We don't actually have that open posted right now. Water utility operator, we had two openings recently. Both of those have been filled. We will have another one, actually, it's probably open already, our firefighter that moved over from the water department. So we'll have another opening in the water department. We just hired a part-time administrative assistant for the water department. Background phase is being completed on that person. And then the wastewater treatment plant, we had two openings, or actually, there was one opening that's been filled, and he started just recently. So he is on board. And then we have a limited hour library assistant. Interviews have been held on that. We're looking at the background phase on that. Today, we opened an assistant library director position. It's been a while since we've had that position open, so that is back open, and that's about all. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR side?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. We'll move on to F2, Land Sale. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. We may have to pause in the middle of the presentation, so feel free to just let me know.
Okay.
The City Commission requested a site plan of this area at the last City Commission meeting, and so what you see before you is exactly that. It's kind of a site plan of the area just south of City Hall and parking lot that currently exists. What you see overlaid in the thick black line there is the potential structure. The requirement was for a 20,000-square-foot minimum building, and so what you see there meets that requirement. The changes that most people, I think, would be interested in is, we will lose some parking spots because of that building structure, of course, and it will change the route of the remaining parking experience. So if we go to the south side, the people that will traverse through that lot will use the alleyway just adjacent to the post office. So on the east side of the post office, they'll travel north, and then they turn to the east. And so that lot will actually simply change. Those diagonal parking are exactly opposite of what's indicated on there today. So there'll be no loss or change in parking in that row itself. The other changes will be on the west side of the proposed building. And you'll notice there that the, it'll be a circular motion in regards to how parking will be provided in that lot. So they're, they'll come in, travel to the east, go north, travel to the west, and then come back south and exit the same point of ingress that they arrived at. So we also, in addition, because we will lose about 72 parking places approximately if the building is constructed as indicated on that site. So to make up for the loss of some of those sites, we have proposed the construction of the parking lot north of City Hall. We've acquired three different properties over the course of time, and we are in the process of having asbestos abated from those three different properties. We will then knock those buildings down and turn that area into a parking lot. So we'll recover somewhere between 31 and 38 parking places with this lot. It depends upon the landscape easement or landscape buffer. We could, if we go to the Board of Adjustments and ask that that landscaping buffer be removed, we would have more spots, so closer to the 38. If we retain the landscape buffer, then we'd be closer to the 31. By retaining the landscape buffer, there is a large pine tree that could be saved, kind of on the northeast side of the lot. And then we'd also do some additional landscaping surrounding it. So anywhere from 31 to 38 spots, you would traverse down the alleyway to the west and then travel north, kind of where the drop-offs are for the bill sites now. It would be right about that location where you would turn north, and then you'd have a couple different options to go down those paths. So in addition to these two lots, and the proposal for this lot, by the way, is for to move all the city staff and parking, get them off the city streets so that they would primarily use this lot. It would become available for public use after City Hall hours are closed. So from 6:00 in the morning till about 6:00 at night, it would be used for City Hall parking, and then any hours after that would be used for public parking. In addition to these two lots, we are, hopefully will have paved, in a hard surface, the lot south of Vallard Street, which would be west of the current railroad building and east of the counseling center. That parking does exist today, but it is not paved, and so it's underutilized, and that would create additional spots in that location. And then we'd also propose to pave the lot where old City Hall is. There is a piece of that land there that is north of Todd Otto's building that is being acquired by Contract for Deed from the Dickinson Elks LLC. That's the group that owns the building that was just renovated on the corner, often to referred to as the Old Elks Building. I just was in contact with their attorney, that Contract for Deed was initiated in 2006. It was supposed to have been concluded in 2000- It was supposed to have been concluded in 2011. Needless to say, they have been tardy on payments, and it does require them, if they do execute that purchase, to pave that lot when the city paves the lot adjacent. So if we pave the old City Hall lot, then they'll have to pave their property that they are acquiring via Contract for Deed. So those, again, are underutilized spaces. They do exist today for parking, but they are gravel, and we have found that when they are paved, they are more utilized. I think a good example of that is the lot just immediately east of the one we're talking about. So the funding stream for those two lots would be the special assessment district funds that were raised and paid for by the downtown landowners. We have about $120,000 left in that. Remaining funds in those are in that fund for this type of purpose. Again, if we do the hard-surfacing and then come back and do the landscape requirements later, we can probably pay both of these lots with those dollars available to us. I don't know how many spots we'd actually create. Create may be the wrong word, since they are technically available but underutilized. If you could advance to the next slide, please. So just to give an overview, the footprint, we'd lose around 72 spaces. The north lot, we gain, I put 35, because that's an average between, or right around the middle of 31 to 38. So we'd lose about 37 spaces. There's currently about 18 reserved spaces that really have not been available to the public during that term. So if you remove those, then we're looking at a total loss of about 19 places. And as I've mentioned, we would be paving those two lots that are mentioned on the bottom of that slide. So I hope that meets the needs of the commission when you asked for a site plan. That is the intention. That is the plan that we would like to execute. You allocated dollars at the last city commission meeting to start the creation of the parking lot north of City Hall, and we are doing so.
We'll pause right now with questions. I'm sure there's many.
Okay.
And we'll move on to the airport budget. Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon, Mayor Decker, Commissioners, staff. I'm Kelly Brown. I'm the airport manager at the Dickinson Municipal Airport, and I'm here to present our 2018 operating budget. The fiscal impacts for our proposed budget, $1,054,034, with expenses projected to be $938,122. A little background for you. By state statute, the airport's annual budget must be approved by the city commission, and as such, the budget was prepared and approved by the Airport Authority Board and forwarded to you for consideration and approval. This year's budget was prepared, anticipating a status quo of upcoming operating income and expenses. Comparing 2017 income, we are projecting a $70,391 decrease, or about 6%, in income, and a $41,584 increase, which is about a 4% increase in expenses. Income. The areas we projected a decrease in are the city and county tax revenue, which we understand is a difficult number to come to until the city and counties' budgets are approved. Car rental commissions are also difficult to incorporate into the revenue projections, but we anticipate these amounts to be on par or slightly ahead of last year's amounts. The past few years, the airport had an agreement with Billings and Stark Counties to assist in the costs of hangar development, and these agreements with both parties have since expired. There are a few areas we anticipate seeing an increase in revenue, and these include the paid parking and areas affected by a new contract with the FBO and a new fee schedule that went into place in January of 2017. Our expenses, we have included a 3% increase in pay for employees for cost of living and performance raises, and we also expect to see cost increases in liability insurance and our flight information display system. The remainder of the expenses should remain about the same as the previous year. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions for Mr. Brown on the airport budget? Mr. Brown, the arrivals, departures, flights out, or boarding, I guess, is it up, down, the same?
We just got our numbers for August, and those numbers are up over August last year. We're about 16,000 implements year-to-date, which is about 2,000 implements over where we were a year ago, year-to-date. We anticipate the year to close out somewhere around 18,000 implements total.
And that'll probably be up from last year?
Yeah, up considerably from last year, about 20%, 25%, or 20%.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Brown? I would then look for a motion to approve the airport budget, or?
Make a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second, Mr. Steiner? Mr. Altman had a?
No, I did, yeah.
Second?
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go back to the land sale. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. The other item that I asked to be added to the agenda related to the construction of the north parking lot was the surplus of two garages that currently exist that are associated with the homes that'll be knocked down. We did offer those garages to internal staff departments, not staff members, but the departments within, and there was no interest in those units. I believe there'll be public interest. We have had a couple of people already express interest in those. So it would save us the expense of knocking them down if they were able to remove them timely. So I'm asking if you would mind surplusing those so that city staff could pursue the removal of those by private citizens.
Is there any objection?
I don't have any objection to that, but Mr. Kessel, maybe for public knowledge, can you walk us back through the process of the bidding process, when the bid closes, how the acceptance process goes, build-out timeline, just all the caveats of where we get?
Yes, certainly, Commissioner Altman's. The land is being advertised currently. It was in the paper. It has to be in the paper three times, and then we can accept bids 10 days after the last bid appears in the paper. So we have a deadline of September 24th, I believe it is, at the end of September.
21st.
21st, okay, thank you. That will actually open up the bids. People will have to prove that they have the financial wherewithal to make the bid and to construct the building. We'll open that surety up first. If it's adequate, then we'll open up the bids themselves. For all those people who do bid and meet that financial surety, they'll be allowed to increase their bid at that time. So $100,000 was the lowest bid available that we would accept. So if there are bids, there'll be a minimum of $100,000, or it could be higher, depending upon if there's multiple bids and people that would participate more. The requirements, in addition to financial surety, were it has to be a 20,000-square-foot structure. It has to meet the city's planning and zoning definition for indoor recreation, and the construction has to occur within 18 months of the bid award being made. So those are the requirements that the city commission set for this land sale.
And they're also responsible for the underground utility movement?
Thank you, Commissioner Altman's. You're correct. I did forget to mention that, yes. All the, there is utilities that will have to be moved, assuming that the structure will traverse the alleyway. There are electrical and gas lines that are underneath there, for sure. I've contacted those utilities, and there is a plan in place to move them, but that would all be paid for by the winning bidder.
Okay.
Thanks for the reminder.
And then the bid, well, there'll be a staff recommendation, then it'll come before the commission for final approval, or how does that work?
With a land sale, there'll be a recommendation, but it'll most likely be the highest qualified bidder, so that the city commission will have the final say in awarding that bid.
Okay. And then you've been in contact also with most downtown entities and the Downtown Association as this has rolled out as well?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you mean by downtown entities, but the Downtown Association is aware. I did talk to their president about this process, so she is knowledgeable. I have talked to some individual property owners in the downtown, but certainly not all of them.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel?
I'd like to make a response. Personally for myself, it seems that we're pushing this through to accommodate the theater more than we are to make sure that we're getting our ducks in a row on the parking side. At the last meeting, I said I couldn't vote for the project if we didn't have a parking lot created for everyone. We lost, and I still don't see that being created with this plan. And even if we did, I don't know if I could really vote for the sale of that land for a theater. I think it's easier for a theater to find a better location than it is for us to find a better location for our parking. We've approached individuals in the community to buy their land, and we haven't gotten anywhere in the last 15 years that I know with some of the individuals, you know, so I don't know why we can go back and keep contemplating it when we just go up against a wall. You know, so I don't want to sit here and fight for every space that we can get and, on the backside, have something that really isn't benefiting the downtown as a whole. I think there's some benefits to the theater being downtown, but not at what it's costing the current businesses that are downtown. I mean, there's a concern. I mean, we're taking out 45 spaces. We're saying we're replacing 18 of them, or 19, whatever it is. I just don't know if piecing them up like we are is a good thing, so, you know, I just wonder if we aren't moving too fast on this fellow's at the theater's pace and not our pace.
Any other comments or questions? I guess, well, Mr. Messer, I don't think this is a public hearing, but?
No, not yet.
So you're not involved in helping input tonight at all then? Just for clarification?
No, I wasn't planning on it, no.
No, we can have a public, we can absolutely.
No, we're not really discussing anything, though.
We're discussing among here, but I think if they want.
Well, I would think public input would be important as you, as commissioners, move through this process.
Okay, Mr. Messer, we'll decide that.
If we want to do it correctly, you could do it at the end of the meeting when you ask for any concerns with the public.
There'll be concerns from the public at the end of the meeting.
At the end of this meeting?
This meeting, yes.
Thank you.
We gotta be here, you gotta be here.
I think with the downtown, with the parking issue, a lot of it is the convenience of parking. I have yet to be in a downtown that it is convenient anywhere to move around and park. You go to Bismarck, you go to Fargo, you walk. You go to Williston, you walk. Minot, you walk. Nobody's stepping up and putting up parking garages. So if we pave, what we are considering to pave, and that would be my next question for Mr. Kessel, is what's the timeframe of paving those two parking lots? We will add additional parking. Yes, you'll have to walk an additional half a block or a block, but there will be parking. And what would be the timeframe, Mr. Kessel? President Decker, we believe, and I'll refer to Engineer Kubis, but we believe we can have those two parking lots paved with asphalt by the end of the month. In fact, we'd almost have to, because the Northern Improvement is moving their site, and so that will close down. Their asphalt production site is going to be closed by the end of September. So to move forward with the parking lot north of City Hall, that would be, we'd be hard-pressed to get the asbestos abated, to get those buildings knocked down, to get the garages moved, all by the end of this month. And so we're anticipating that that's probably going to have to be a concrete lot, much the same as the county courthouse lot is just north of that. So we would replicate, to some degree, the similar lots or parking that the county has produced in the area. And if that's the case, we wouldn't expect that to be hard-surfaced until probably October, maybe even the beginning of November.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kessel? Comments?
Mr. Kessel, there's also a contingency on whoever bids, and if the bid is accepted, that they're not able to flip this property as well?
That is the intention. It wasn't written into the actual guidelines, but that was discussed. Trying to find a way to do that was difficult from a legal perspective, and if Attorney Cripe would like to comment, you certainly can, but that is certainly, I think, the intention of the commission, and certainly it is of the staff. But we didn't want a prospector to buy the lot and then turn around and sell it to somebody else at a profit.
I mean, we have requirements on what?
Right.
Timeframe and?
On the groundbreaking is what was intended, but no, there isn't anything specific saying they can't resell within a certain period of years or anything of that nature.
Any other comments? No questions? Okay, Mr. Kessel, we'll move on. The thank you.
We added the agenda item related to surplusing those garages.
Oh, okay.
I think Commissioner Altman's was going down that path prior to the questions, but I'd.
So I guess we'd look for a motion, then, to approve that you could sell, put those up for public auction?
Correct. And just so the commission is aware, that auction may be at $0. The benefit would be just removing it so that we don't have to pay for its deconstruction and removal.
So I guess I would look for a motion, then, to approve the sale of the surplus buildings on our land?
I'd make that motion.
A motion to sell the surplus buildings?
Second.
In a second. Any other further discussion, questions?
I don't remember. We don't surplus that up.
Not, we'll vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You have permission to auction those buildings.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, I have one more comment, because it's always been our end goal, when we bought the properties behind here, to turn that into a parking lot. Whether we get a qualified bidder or not, we aren't jumping the gun, because this has been a long-term goal to remove those houses, remove the garages, and turn that into employee parking behind City Hall regarding.
Commissioner Altman's, that's correct. We acquired them at a time when housing was at its peak, and we needed to, so the thought process, we could use them for staff members. They could live in them. Our thought was transitionally, so they lived in them for about six months until they could find their own housing, and yes, and that at the end of their need, we would turn that area into a parking lot. And that need is no longer there, and so this is the fulfillment of the plan that was hatched back in about 2013.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on? Questions for Mr. Kessel on land sale? Okay, we'll move on to item three, the thank you notes.
We received several different thank you notes. These are a result of grants that we've provided to the Sunset Senior Center, Elder Care Public Transit. They're also going through that planning process, and then the Midora Fire Department. That was the Southwest grant that we also provide. It's nice to see that those dollars are appreciated and that they're meeting the needs of the locations in which they're being served. So we also have the WDEA Conference, or Western Dakota Energy Association Conference. That's going to be held here in Dickinson on November 1st and 2nd. I put the website up so that if you want additional information on it, you could look at it there. The topics are going to be advances in technology, whether that's in drilling or in fracking or in coal. There's coal technology that will be discussed as well. There'll be a legislative update, K-12 education panel, county-by-county production report. That's provided by Mineral Resources Director Lynn Helms, who is confirmed to be at the meeting along. meeting, along with the Lieutenant Governor and Tom Mitchell, the DSU President. And of course, our own, uh, Commission President Decker will be providing a thank you and a welcome to that, uh, event. So if you're interested in attending, please let myself or Rita know, we'll make sure that you get registered for that event, uh, and can attend. It's at the Ramada Grand Dakota here in, in Dickinson. And then the next and last item is simply a question, um, during the massive flooding events that have happened due to Hurricane Harvey down in, uh, the Texas, uh, area, Dickinson, Texas, for those people who may not be aware, is, uh, is a community that's located between Houston and, uh, the ocean. So it's, it's actually was impacted prior to Houston. I know that the, Houston is getting all of the airplay, but Dickinson, Texas, um, is also devastated by the, by the hurricane itself. Our, um, dispatch center received hundreds of calls, uh, from people in Dickinson, Texas, trying to find resources and assistance, inadvertently calling us instead. So we know that the, the need is great, and so I've contacted their interim city administrator and their mayor to see what kind of assistance that may be able to be provided, um, by, um, the city of Dickinson. As you can imagine, things are quite busy down there. I've not received a return phone call yet, uh, but those flood impacts, uh, will, will be there, I'm guessing, for weeks if not months. Permanent flood protection will take years. I've worked with that in the city of Wapatin, uh, and trying to achieve it through the Corps of Engineers is, is a long process. It just takes time. So I know that there's a couple of local efforts, uh, to try and, and gather goods, um, to be sent down to, uh, this area, and I just wanted to, uh, ask the city commission if they have any thoughts with regards to assistance that we may be able to provide to the city of Dickinson, Texas, uh, when, when and if they do ask, and maybe they should drive, uh, their needs. But my thought is, it doesn't have to be dollars, it might be staff. If they have all of these homes that have been impacted, they're probably going to have to be inspected, uh, when they're reconstructed, and I'm sure that their building and staff will be overwhelmed, uh, quite quickly, uh, with the amount of, of properties being improved. My guess is that'll be a downtime for our city staff, maybe in December, January, or February, um, and we could send some staff down there, uh, to help them out. But until I hear back from them, I, I guess maybe we should wait until, uh, they provide us with, uh, their need, um, but I wanted to bring it up so that the city commission, if you had thoughts, that we could, uh, reach out in a different way.
Well, I think, Mr. Kessel, it'd be appropriate to, to wait and see if they, um, what they might request, um, and then bring it to the commission, if we have to even, if it's something, some dire need of man hours or something, maybe we can hold a special meeting and consider it, so. But, uh, I think we just wait. I'm sure they're overwhelmed right now with just trying to deal with their own backyard.
But there have been some local efforts that people can get involved with right here.
I know there's two local companies there gathering up goods, and they're gonna, um, send trucks down, um, to Texas with, uh, donated items, so.
I know, Elite Power is one of them.
Yep, Elite Power, and I think...
Two's Construction.
Two's Construction.
Trinity's Public Schools is also collecting items. Those are the ones I'm aware of.
So I, I'm not sure, we have a representative from Two's in the audience, would you mind speaking to the group and where donated items could be provided, are you, do you know? I know you didn't come for this, but...
Hi, my name's Mike Odegaard with Two's Construction. I'm here for a different agenda item. Um, yes, our company and Elite and several other businesses around Dickinson have thrown together an effort to try and help out people in Texas and actually have been coordinating with Dickinson, Texas Fire Department to be a control point for these materials since it just made good sense. Um, the materials, uh, I'll provide my name and number. I can be contacted tomorrow, and I can provide all the details as to exactly when and where, because we do have a couple, uh, and the needs of water and canned goods and dry goods and things of that nature that are easily transportable and readily used, uh, upon receipt. So, uh, my number is seven zero one two six zero zero one zero four, and I can be contacted and direct you to the proper drop-off location and what materials are requested.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, that would end my report then.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Moving on, we have, uh, nothing from public safety. The first thing in engineering, we are gonna, um, hold off until we get some more information for, uh, Engineer Kubis to present to us, so we'll just move through the reports, I guess, or...
We're, we're gonna pull the report and...
Okay, you wanna, you wanna pull both of them?
No, we'll cover, cover change order number two.
Okay.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Uh, change order number two is for our Fourteenth Street Improvement Projects. That's now, um, substantially complete, it's open to the public now. This was a change order to add a GeoGrid fabric. Mr. Zerup, do you have the remote? This is a, an example, a representative picture of the fabric that was added to the project, helped stabilize the ground, obviously. We've, we've been there, we've seen other construction projects. Um, our intent originally was to use, thank you, was to use, uh, an item called subgrade preparation, where you manually work the soil, dry it out. Of course, uh, we ran into some utilities on the project, the soil was as wet or wetter than we thought it was going to be, so, um, uh, we had a change order, it amounted to two thousand dollars, twenty-seven hundred and nineteen dollars to add this GeoGrid fabric, help stabilize the subgrade, um, and provide a uniform base to, to build our pavement section on. So, uh, again, one other side on there, but, uh, essentially the, the contractor, um, in exchange for not doing the subgrade preparation, um, installed the material at his cost and paid for half the material cost, the city paid for half of the material cost. So, uh, I think it was a win-win change order for the contractor. It opened up the, the street, although it didn't feel like it, it opened it up to the public faster than if we'd had to go through subgrade preparation and, and touch those private utilities again, so. With that, city staff would recommend approval of change order number two, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Engineer Kubis?
Move to approve change order number two.
A motion to approve change order number two on the Fourteenth Street Improvement.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? Not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Change order's approved. We'll move on to Public Works. We have an Armory Roof Bid, uh, Public Works Director Zerup.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. I just wanted to go back first, minimum recommendations by GT Architecture was to do a new roof membrane, uh, replace the rotted, uh, portions of the, uh, rotted wood siding, uh, full shingle replacement, regrade, add rock and downspouts, and their estimate, uh, was two-hundred-and-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. We received bids August 30th, 2017. One bid was received from Two's Construction, Inc. Uh, the single prime bid, which is the membrane roof, was, uh, came in at one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. The alternate G1, which is the shingles, came in at eighty-four nine, and miscellaneous, came in eighty-four thousand-nine-hundred dollars, for a total of one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. The unit price was for removal and replacement of the wet and damaged roof insulation as needed, um, uh, so, uh, it came in under, uh, projected budget, and the city staff and GT Architecture recommend approval.
Any questions for Directors Zerup on the Armory Roof Project?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve the Armory Roof Bid?
Second.
With a second. Any other questions, comments? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Zerup, I think you have a report.
Yes, th- thank you, President Decker. We have a report on recycling. I guess I wanted to, we wanted to bring up recycling again. We seem to, this topic seems to go, uh, a, a discussion that goes, uh, around and around numerous times, um, and I know it's a difficult subject, uh, there's a lot of people that want recycling, there's a dollar involved with recycling, but, uh, first, I just wanted to have a quick update on our recycling history. This is from earliest to, um, the latest, I guess. Uh, in February 2010, there was a recycling, uh, committee started, and it was chaired by, uh, Gene Jackson. They did a survey of the general public, residential, uh, and at that time they, uh, determined the interest in the recycling, and I, if I remember right, um, it was about a thirty percent, uh... That time approximately eight hundred people did respond to the survey that was sent out to the utility and billing list. Thirteen people at that time said they'd be willing to pay a monthly fee for recycling. Now, that was a long time ago. Commissioner Jackson, uh, at that time, uh, said that they would have wanted to put together a committee and, uh, start bringing options of recycling to, uh, the city of Dickinson. In February 2011, uh, recycling sites were established, I believe there was a grant, uh, for that. Cardboard yard waste residential, uh, amounts, uh, of oil, motor oil, were established in February 2011. Mid-2012, uh, recycling at the Baylor Building added household batteries, cell phones, printer cartridges, aside from other recycling efforts at the Baylor Building. Uh, late 2013, we started accepting co-mingled paper at the recycling sites, and then there was a gap, uh, of course, during the boom, there was about two or three years, there was, uh, a gap until August of 2016, and that's when we started looking into recycle options. And at that time was President Gene Jackson of the commission, and he feels that this is the right time for recycling program, and hopefully the staff will start bringing options and bring this recycling, a recycling program, uh, to the commission and, and completion soon. So that was August 2016. So we started looking into, uh, different types of additional recycling. In September, or November of 2016, uh, we presented a RFP for approval with the operational changes that we felt were needed for recycling, uh, and discussed different options in the single stream recycling for, which is, um, pretty prevalent in this area, common in, in this area, um, to the commission. In December of 2016, uh, we did put out RFP, and one RFP was received by G and G Garbage. In February of 2017, the decision was to decline the first RFP, that RFP, because of costs, so it was decided to send out, put out another request for proposal. In April 2017, we did the second round of RFPs, we received two, Renaissance Recycling and Trans Trash. And July of 2017, uh, we started putting together, uh, a contract with Renaissance Recycling, and we have that contract done now, and, um, I guess that's a quick and dirty history of, of recycling, um, and that's where we are today. I guess I'm, we're waiting as a, as a staff and solid ways to, to know what direction the commission wants to go now. Do we want to have more public input meetings? Do you want, um, do you want us to have the contract signed and bring to the commission at the next, uh, meeting? What are the wishes of the commission at this?
Mr. President, uh, I, I think we need to have at least one more public input meeting. I don't really know if we had a public input meeting. I know there's people here for tonight, for a public input meeting, so, uh, I don't know if we want to have one tonight yet, or reschedule ones, or we have a solid timetable for a public input meeting. I would, uh, request that, uh, Aaron be here when these people come with their questions. I know, we discussed it a couple of meetings ago about the south side where some routes were of a concern to some of the, the public and so on. I, I think you need to hear their side of it, uh, Mr. Prowse, uh, see where they're coming from and see if we can make any changes to accommodate them. So I would recommend we set up a public hearing, uh, I don't know, it doesn't need to be a city commission hearing, but it can be a public input with the waste staff here.
Commissioner Steiner, you know, I guess we discussed some of these things when we put out the request for proposal on, you know, we, the commission wanted no opt-out, uh, we discussed getting rid of the three-hundred gallons. I, I guess, are we saying we want to then step all the way back again?
Yeah, I don't think we need to go that far back, because we discussed all that, we just didn't discuss it with the public. You know, we, we never had a public input meeting where he, you know, we didn't put a notice out there that I know of, where we had a public input meeting. At least the people that are coming to me ask it, haven't been...
I have been asked also to have a public input, so I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, putting it actually on the next, our next meeting, because I think we need to hear it too as commissioners, not just Public Works. I think we need to hear who's in support and who's against it, you know? And a lot of people have valid concerns, and, um, and at that time, we, we, then we, I think after that meeting, we'll, we'll give you your direction you're looking for. I, I know we're delaying it another two weeks, but I, I feel we should have a public hearing at our next meeting, schedule it, and advertise it so people can come. And the, people are more than welcome tonight at the end, for if they're here, uh, public issues, uh, of city concern, not on the agenda, they can come up and they can speak about the recycling at that time also. But I do think we need to have a hard time and have it advertised so we can hear from the public.
I, I, I agree with that. I would also request that Mr. Prowse and Mr. Zerup meet with Mr. Wighouse sometime between now and then to hear his concerns that he has got from his whole neighborhood down there. He's got a couple ideas, that if it works, it works, it's not, we listen. Is that okay?
Any other comments, questions, concerns? I, I know you're, you're looking, you're looking, um, for us to, you know, bring the contract, but I think we, we need to wait the two weeks and...
And that doesn't, I, I appreciate the input of the public, but I, I guess maybe we should have done that before we put together our request for proposal, but it's a good time, I don't want to get ahead of the game, and that's why I'm bringing it.
We could approve, I guess, what you want, right now, tonight.
It's not, to me, it's not what I want, it's what the commission wants.
Right, but we, well, we could approve it tonight, as far as I'm concerned, as long as we still discuss with those individuals of how some routes can be run, that's what they're concerned about. You know, we have, we don't discuss the routes, you guys put together the routes, but as far as accepting the proposals and everything, I have no problem, we can go ahead and get that done.
So, so you want me to bring the, the contract to commission at the next meeting?
Yep, because what they have concern about doesn't affect the contract.
Excuse me, that was my suggestion as well, is bring the contract forward, we can always, um, make a movement afterwards, after hearing public input, and if there are concerns with neighborhoods, um, that doesn't have to do with the contract, as Commissioner Steiner said, those are things that we can work out. Um, what is our, uh, date of implementation? Do we have a, a rough start date if it is passed?
I think now, uh, Mr. Prowse can help me, but it, we're probably looking at spring.
Okay, so there's a lot of time to, to figure things out.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we'd have to do another RFP if we want to change too much, because we did put that in the request for proposal and the contract, so I just need the time to change either the contract or whatever the commission...
I don't think anything they want to talk about has anything to do with the contract.
Okay, appreciate that.
And I, I guess I would have a question for either you or Mr. Prowse. If, if the public outcry is that, um, they don't want this, if, if we hear enough from the public, I think we need recycling. Do we have an option in place maybe to not go with the RFP, but expand our recycling as we have it now? Would there, would there be an option?
Well, of course, I think there's options to look at additional recycling, like, sites, additional hours at the Baylor.
Right. Is that something, Mr. Prowse, I mean, have you considered it? And, uh, another option, if we would not approve the RFP?
I guess where we were at with the whole thing is, uh, waiting for the approval of the RFP. Uh, there was some internal discussion amongst us as to looking at alternative decision, or, alternative options if the RFP does not follow through. or alternative options if the RFP does not follow through.
So you kind of have a backup plan?
Somewhat. It's not a definite.
I do think that we have a need for recycling. What, how we implement it is going to be, I guess, the discussion we'll have in two weeks after the public hearing.
I mean, for me, I thought we were past that phase. I thought we are having recycling and that's why we went to this point. I mean, I thought we were well past that phase already. I mean, I haven't heard any comments against recycling. I mean, there's going to be some stuff to get worked through on delivery and pickup and, I mean, are we all saying that if thirty people show up next week and say they don't want it and ten say they do, we're not going to do it? I mean, is that?
I think all to me, all five of us, if I'm reading it right, would say yes, we want recycling. However, I think we've got to get some things in order, or at least talk with some of these people out there that are struggling with it.
I don't mind, I understand, I don't have any problem hearing concerns, but I mean, but most of it's going to be operational, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
And, you know, with the RFP and contract, you know, it is no opt-out. And the contract is six dollars and five cents per month and increase to two point five percent. You know, that's all set. So if we want to change any of that, then we have to back.
I mean, and if somebody doesn't want to recycle, we're not forcing them to recycle. They just have to pay the fee, correct? No matter what. It's the only comments I guess I have, so.
Then we'll bring the contract and put a public input meeting and a contract for the next commission. Is that somewhat the direction we want to go?
Yes, Mr. Ross, that would work.
Thank you very much.
And meet with Mr. Wighouse in the interim.
Okay, I know we have, we had Assessor Hirschfeld on. I think we're just going to move on to Mr. Hadley and then we'll put Mr. Hirschfeld up afterwards.
Mr. President, real quick. So can we confirm next commission meeting will be, the contract will be on the agenda as well as public input? Okay, just want to, and that date is?
The eighteen.
Okay, September eighteenth.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to planning. Planning Director Hadley, we have a zoning amendment.
Yes, Mr. President, it's Cook Meadows Fifth rezoning. It would be ordinance number sixteen forty-one, I believe. It's REZ dash zero zero three dash seventeen. What it is, this is a first reading, it's a correction for the zone changes that were done initially when this was created. The ordinance that was created at the time listed incorrect zonings as far as the locations. And so what we're doing tonight is actually doing the first reading on the correction. We did get written response from the owner of Cook Meadows and was in total concurrence with what you see in front of you. You have the proposed and existing zoning in your packets, I believe. The staff and planning commission would recommend approval of this.
Okay, any comments or questions for Planning Director Hadley on this zoning amendment?
Mr. President, I do have one other thing to add that I forgot, sorry. The only change from the initial one was we are creating a public zoning designation for the Stormwater Pond that the city is going to wind up taking over. So it's designated to the public.
And the ordinance number again, Mr. Hadley?
Sixteen forty-one.
Sixteen forty-one, which is, it's amending ordinance fifteen sixty-four, am I correct?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley, comments? If not, I would look for a motion to approve or deny.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance sixteen forty-one.
We have a motion to approve sixteen forty-one. And a second. Any other questions, comments? Now we'll vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Fr, uh, Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is that it for, do you have anything additional, Mr. Hadley?
Thank you.
Okay, now we're up, we'll have Assessor Hirschfeld come in with an abatement rejection
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Commissioners. Thank you for accommodating my schedule here. I had something that come up in discussion between the other tax directors and assessors and I about proper procedure. And so I included the application for abatement, the century code that pertains to that part. So hopefully had a chance to review that. But in that, the county is required to give their reasoning for why they made their decision to the applicant. Then it occurred to me, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea for the city to do the same in providing their rationale to the county. And that way, you know, they can kind of hear firsthand from each of you why you elected to make the decision that you did. I know when I go, I try and to make those comments as best as I remember them, but maybe I'm not capturing the essence of all your thought process. So I wanted to bring that before you and throw it out there and see what your thoughts were on providing that, that letter to the county.
Any comments on this letter or questions for Mr. Hirschfeld?
I thought you did a good job of laying out all of the reasons why we arrived at the decision that we did.
I think it's good communication.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think it's, it's put together well and I, I think it captures the intent of the Any other comments, questions for Mr. Hirschfeld?
If I'm hearing you correctly, then you're, you're comfortable with the language that I presented that if I go ahead and move that forward then?
Yes.
Very good.
Mrs. Krippe, do we need a motion to approve this letter?
If it's coming from the city commission, I think a motion is appropriate.
Go move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this letter to the county abatement. We'll go ahead and vote if, unless there's comments or questions. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your letter is approved. Go ahead and forward it to the county.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners.
We have nothing coming out of building and codes tonight. Anything from commissioners that you want to bring to the public's attention or to other commission members? Anything from commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move on to section eleven, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have a public issue of city concern, please come forward, state your name for the commission and state your concern.
Excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. My name is Neil Messer and I'm here to address the issue of the city lot sale that was on your agenda earlier. Apologize for being out of order and earlier, so, but I do appreciate the ability to make some comments. First of all, I think that everyone wants a vibrant downtown and we all support any effort that comes forth to, to allow that to happen. Vibrant downtown is critical to our community. But I also believe that the current land sale that's in front of you is not in the best interests of downtown in trying to help businesses succeed and also try to locate in the downtown area. The, as you saw before, the current proposal you have in front of you basically shows that the lot that is in, south of City Hall, that current proposed sale would encompass about sixty-five percent of that area and over seventy percent of the spaces. And the reason for that difference is obviously the rerouting of traffic on, on the west end. To say that downtown parking is a challenge is an understatement. I think the lot, proposed lot sales that are, that's down there is basically fully occupied for the vast majority of the time. Over the past several weeks, I've had the opportunity to go out, take my drone and fly from different angles, take a number of photos and at different times, different days, and it is almost encompassing, almost always fully occupied. There are no excess spaces to, to allow to give up, to renegotiate, to relocate and that kind of stuff. If you look at the current makeup of the lot typically on any given day, there's about fifteen to twenty spaces that are occupied by the post office. Let's say Gate City Building takes about the same amount of spaces. Our building, City Center Plaza, probably takes forty to fifty spots with businesses and employees. City Hall probably takes in that same range of fifteen to twenty spots with the balance of those spots being occupied by downtown businesses, customers or clients. If you look at the revised plan, on the west end of the building adjacent to, east of, south of Gate City and east of our building, there are only thirteen spots left. The other, there are, the other twenty spots that are left are adjacent to the lily pad and directly across that alley is the, as the draft depicted. The post office employees show up at seven AM, which means if you take their fifteen to twenty vehicles, try to allocate it across thirteen spots, that lot is fully used easily by seven thirty. Now, I know all people are spoiled in our area as far as walking to things and access, as was mentioned earlier. But I think by taking those spots and moving them another block to the north, to the north of City Hall, I think you're putting existing businesses in jeopardy of losing them to other businesses which are more strategically located for their service. I know that I've talked to a number of the downtown businesses, I've talked to the Downtown Business Association on this topic. I know a couple of the individuals are here tonight. Numerous couldn't be here tonight. I did have an extended conversation with Kristi Schwartz and there are a number of concerns relative to this proposal being there. And I would, again, I would suggest that you reach out and try to listen to those people before you make a decision in this regard. It seems also that the criteria, as mentioned, you know, the movie theater name has been thrown out, but it also seems that the criteria for the sale is also very restrictive. It's, it's really targeting one single-use buyer. And if you look into the, you know, I'm in the real estate business and the more restrictions you put on a piece of property, the less it has in value. And that's very true here. We're talking about a potential hundred thousand dollar minimum bid. If you're only targeting one buyer and that bid comes in at the minimum a hundred thousand, you're selling that property for about four dollars a square foot. That's grossly, grossly undervalued. It's easily worth double that. And so I think the economics of this deal also have to come into play. Maybe they don't, but I think they should. And if the plan is that you take the proceeds from the lot sale and help rebuild the parking lots to the city, the north of City Hall where you would demolish three properties, re-landscape them and resurface them, I think it has to become part of the formula. I've visited with several businesses recently that have done resurfacing of both concrete and asphalt. And your proceeds alone would more than use up, be used up in the hard surfacing alone. That doesn't include demolition, re-landscaping and those kind of things. I know that the idea is that potentially city staff and equipment would be used to do some of those surfaces, but I think you would want to put, accurate accounting would want to, say you would have to put a value on those services. If not, it just, it just wouldn't be an accurate reflection of what's going on over there. I know that you're also mentioning that you have special funds, special assessment funds that are in reserve for potential uses of this. Well, if you didn't do this deal, you would still have those funds available to you. And so I think that's important as well. When I first heard of this idea a couple of months ago, it came to me off the, off the street. I contacted as many commissioners as I could. Fortunately, I was lucky, a couple of them immediately returned my phone calls. And I was kind of surprised to find out that those two commissioners knew nothing of the proposal. What they heard was, what the information they had was news from me. And so my concern was that A, it accurately get put out there and B, that some kind of a reasonable, reasonable timeframe be enacted so that we're not rushing. Because there really isn't a rush here. Even if you decide that you're going to sell your property on the twenty-first of September, I believe you mentioned earlier, by the time that building is designed and permitted, more than likely the, the new buyer would not be able to start construction, at least till next spring anyway. So there hasn't been an opportunity before tonight to have any public input on this and I think it's important to do that. Because the perception out there is that this is a slam dunk, it's a deal that's already been derived and done, just waiting a form of process. And that's really not appropriate and it's not fair to the public and it's probably not a fair, fair to you as commissioners. So I guess, you know, the, the question is it, you know, the perceived secrecy, I think, is, is a, is a problem. And the, the timing of this being perceived as in a rush status, I think, is also a problem. The idea that, that I would like to see forth is allow more public input, allow more people into the decision process. If in fact, the movie theater came to the city and said, hey, you're the largest landowner in downtown Dickinson, we'd like to put a theater downtown, what do you have? And you laid out various lots and they picked that lot. I think some creativity and maybe renegotiating the deal. I know there's a separate piece of property that is, surrounds your three lots to the, to the north here. Maybe an opportunity to get that property involved and have the theater move there. In essence, you could almost give that property, all those lots, to the new buyer and financially you would be ahead because you are going to lose money selling this and replacing the lot. The other thing too, I think the, the reflection of, of how many spaces were actually lost is not accurate. I don't know if it was seventy-two or three were, were mentioned on the, on the sketch. I think that's accurate. Thirty-five or thirty-three, excuse me, thirty-five or thirty-three would be replaced in the north parking lot. And then you try adding back in reserved spots. Well, you can't add spots that are already there and then also call them reserved spots. For example, across the hall or across the street, the city, I believe, has four spots for their, for their fleet. You can't call them in that space that you're, that they're being eliminated and then saying, well, we're putting them back in because that was fleet vehicles. That's an inaccurate math on how that is. So I, I still think it is a thirty-plus loss of spaces. We don't have thirty spots to give up and I would certainly hope that you feel the same. So I guess in conclusion, what I'm asking for is put yourself in the position of many of the businesses who are downtown who are trying to succeed and thrive in our area and try to do the right thing in making, in making this happen or not happen. And I would hope that you would agree that you would leave the lot to the south of us in its current condition and in its current status. I guess that's all I have. Thank you for your time and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Any questions for Mr. Messer?
I'm at a whole mine for the end.
Anyone else from the public? Have any issues of city concern, not on the agenda?
Hello, my name is James Bedard with JB Window Cleaning and Parking Lot Solutions. I just, you know, follow up with Neil Messer on this. I have great concern with the feasibility of selling the parking lot and putting a movie theater downtown. There's just a lot of unanswered questions that haven't ever been even been asked. I think one question that I would have is, has the developer been named in this scenario? And does this developer have any other business interests in Dickinson of the like kind? Parking is always a problem in Dickinson that I have to deal with. I strike parking lots. And so Dickinson has a, actually Western North Dakota has a kind of a nickname for the land of the smallest parking lots, just due to the, the inherent value, the square footage value for every building. And when I heard about the development of a movie theater downtown, just real, realistic, like I'm just a citizen, I'm a business owner, I'm out in the public a lot, and it just blows me away that this would even be a possibility. And... And I had to go through the oil boom and watching the development, the needs, like the, just the constraints of what an oil boom would do to a community. But I also had to drive by a five-story building downtown that was vacant, like, not, I mean, just not usable, because whatever short-sightedness happened in the last oil boom 30 years ago, like, why is a five-story building in the center part of the town not able to be used? But because it's just feasibility, like, short-sightedness on, like, on the developer's part. And when I started to think about that, like, why would a developer want to develop something that needs a tremendous amount of parking in where a place that has no parking? You're removing the park to put something that needs parking. And looking around, you have other movie theater in town that has a lot of parking, and you have other developers that have plenty of space for parking. So why would we feasibly, as a community, want something that might not work, like, a very high success rate of failure coming to town? And normally, I drive by City Hall a lot and would never think about coming into these meetings, but lately, I find myself more and more having to come up here and speak, because for me to stand by and see something and not say something is probably the greatest wrong. I love Dickinson, I grew up here, not, I wasn't born here, but I learned how to live here. And it's our responsibility as citizens to look around and say, hey, like, we love this town, we want to see this town grow, but the thing is, is we have to stand up for, against developers that, like, will build a five-story building downtown with no use. And so we might end up with another movie theater, or we want something, another failed business. We have strip malls that are empty, I have to clean windows right next to lots of buildings that are not working right now. And so I agree with Neil Messer, like, there's a lot of questions, and public input is not happening on this. Like, I ask a lot of people, and nobody knows what's going on about this, and it's concerning. And you're going to see a lot of rural, like, residential areas infected by this, because your parking is going to be pushed out into your housing areas. Like, as I've been driving by the movie theater right now up at the mall, and on a slow night, you have 30 to 40 cars there. On a busy night, and this is a three-screen movie theater, you'll have upwards of 100 and 120 cars. Now, go with an eight-screen movie theater, where are people going to park? Where are people going to park in a snow emergency? What happens when, say, this, in two or three years, you have a grand opening of a movie theater night in December, and you have a snowstorm? There's no parking. You're going to see a movie theater, that's not going to be self-sufficient. And so that's just common sense speaking to me, and so I just wanted to bring it to the cities of attention, and I think that's my two cents worth. So, cool? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Chuck Weighhouse. A, I'll just come back at the public hearing.
Pardon?
I'll talk to Gary and come back at the public hearing.
Yes, yes, do that. Mr. Prospect there, Mr. Zurov here, we'll meet with you, so after the meeting, get a time and a date, and then, you know, maybe they can work something out to your satisfaction, and the crew down, the group down there, maybe they can work something out, and won't need to come to the public hearing.
If you want to talk to Aaron back there, we already kind of discussed the time we can meet tomorrow, so if that works for you. Okay, well, we'll talk about a good time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, my name is Nicole Shoder. Not only do I work downtown at City Center Plaza, I live about a block and a half from here, right north of the courthouse, and I know every day that parking's an issue, because I see it, and I also see it when there are events down here, when there's snow down here, that there are people parked up as far as my house trying to get into downtown. So I can't imagine taking away a very large, daily-occupied courthouse, what the parking is going to be like in my residential neighborhood, when there's already people parking up by my house to get down here on several occasions throughout the year.
Hi, I'm Tru White, and I don't have a very good voice today, and we've heard some scholarly reasons and some facts and figures about why, about this project, and I'm just going to take a whole different perspective and not even try to be intelligent, because it's an emotional deal, it's an emotional project, and so I'm just going to come straight from my own emotions, which I, is that not close enough? Okay, well, the idea, I made some notes so that I can try to not get too far off. This is outrageously ignorant, cockamamie idea with, which needs not be dignified by any real scholarly response. The answer, it's obvious and simple and common sense. Every aspect of the weirdness of how it's being presented just plain stinks. Everything about it just is bad idea. It's stupid, and it lacks good judgment. So that just kind of fits it in plain terms. Anybody want to ask me anything else?
Any questions for Ms. White?
Thank you.
I think you need to come out of your shell next time.
Yeah, right.
Anyone else from the public who would want to come forward with a city concern, not on the agenda? Anyone else? I know we have a couple commissioners that wanted to reserve their comments till the Yes, I'll be closing the public hearing if no one else is coming up, so we'll go back to commissioners.
Mr. President, I'll start. First of all, it's wonderful to have people here providing input, and I know I've received a lot of letters, emails, phone calls today especially. If I didn't get back to you, I'm sorry, I'm a teacher, so it's a busy day, and I have to hurry up and get here. But I just, I did get a chance to talk to Christie Schwartz today. It's important to know how the Downtown Association feels, because I know she is the spokesman. She informed me that there hasn't been any formal action or opinion, but based on the few people she's talked to, there isn't intense opposition, and she did state that she is personally in favor of the project, and I did hear that from her personally. I completely understand the parking issue. I have been all over in regards to my thoughts on this project, because I do listen intently, and I do care about what the public says, which makes my job harder, because I feel like I don't want to let people down, none of us do, and especially, it's really hard when people are divided. You know, I have some questions first for staff. I know we have talked about changing parking on streets to diagonal. I know that would create additional parking. Is that possible?
We did look at that, and I think Engineer Kubis can probably answer that question best.
Commissioner Trustum, last year, it was proposed to us to inquire into it, to see if that would be feasible. It looked like it would be feasible, but upon further code review, there isn't enough room. We only looked at First Street, there is obviously diagonally parking on Second Street, but on First Street, even to get diagonal parking on one street, we didn't have the clearances we need for the apparatus, fire apparatus, to get to two and three-story buildings. So we didn't pursue the diagonal parking last year.
So it's out the window. Okay, thank you. I guess from some of the information I've gathered, I know there's opposition, and I don't know if it's more of a personal inconvenience, or it's just a distaste for the proposed project. It seems like many people in here have some ideas of what the proposal is. One thing I want to note that was brought to my attention is, you know, I know we are concerned about parking, but parking doesn't necessarily deter people from going downtown, and an example of that is First on First, where we've had people in the thousands come. I didn't get, I actually tried to get exact numbers this afternoon, wasn't able to do so, but I was told that it was in the upwards of 5,000, do you know?
We've had some that have been there.
Right, depending on the event and what band is playing there. With the movie theater, I know a lot of that park, or if it is a movie theater, a lot of that parking would be evening, so hopefully that would alleviate the concerns from business owners who are concerned about their clientele or the people that visit their establishment. Many downtown throughout the, throughout North Dakota have parking concerns, and, you know, I think we kind of spoke to, we have a lot of, more options here than in many other bigger municipalities. Other thing I had, you know, I think, I know the city has done studies and plans for revitalization, and maybe it's time to bring forth some of those ideas to the public, so that they don't see this as something just being brought out of nowhere, that there is actually a plan and direction for downtown, and we should share that with the public, so they're able to have that idea as well. I also know there's been concerns in regards to how this has been brought forward, and I agree, I think we should have gone about it a different way. With that being said, I think we need to also move forward, take input into consideration, and decide what is the best plan of action. That would conclude my comments.
Any other comments?
Mr. Kessel, if you could just shed some light on how this even came about. It's not like the city commission, we're sitting here and thought, what should we do with this parking lot across the street? Can you walk us through how we got to where we are today?
Certainly. Commissioner Oltman, this project probably began five years ago. In terms of the potential use, that has been discussed here this evening, and we were approached by a developer to consider a spot in downtown. We did research two or three different spots for a potential location, something that would work. Our preference was not this location, our preference was for a location actually further to the west, but that didn't work out either. So the discussion settled upon this spot, this location. It actually changed from one side of the parking lot to the other, in terms of where the building would actually sit if they are the winning bidder. And so it's evolved. It's evolved over the course of time. This developer actually started downtown, went to multiple other places as the boom. We had a lot of parcels of land that weren't available when he originally approached the city. He did review multiple other sites. I'd say at least four, if not five, other sites in Dickinson to locate a structure in those sites. Those deals didn't work out, for whatever reason. I'm not familiar with why they didn't work out, but I do know that the attempts were made to locate in other places. And then he came back, came back to the city and said, you know, after further review, I'd like to talk about it again in the downtown. So that's been the genesis, that's been the history of this location and this site. It has evolved, as I mentioned, over the course of time.
And since it's a city lot, and we had somebody interested in buying a city lot, why didn't we just do a transaction? Why is it?
Commissioner Oltman, we cannot sell land that way. The city has to put forth a public notice if we're going to sell land. There's a very specific criteria involved in selling city land. We used to maintain multiple parcels of land that the city commission put a price tag on, and we published, and then after that process took place, we advertised it, and then it was easier, because the advertising had already taken place, the price tags had been set. This took a little bit longer, because we didn't have a price tag set originally. It wasn't land that we had considered for sale. So the commission was approached with regard to the project, carving out a portion of that specific site, and we're now in the process of advertising it per ordinance in state law.
And so just because somebody comes to the city and requests to purchase a piece of land, A, they can't, it has to go out to public bid and public notice, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they will end up with that parcel of land either.
That's correct. At the end of the day, it's the city commission's decision whether or not they want to part with that land. Even if it's put for sale, it is ultimately in your five hands, 10 hands, I guess, to decide whether or not you want to sell it.
So the process as we are at today is that it will be closed for bid on September 21st. We will see if we have any or multiple bids on that, and then ultimately, it'll be coming before the city commission to decide if we want to accept or decline any said bids.
Absolutely accurate.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions for the public or staff? Since public, public issues and city's concern is closed, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?